Good evening and welcome to the January 12, 2016 workshop meeting of the Town of Yarmouth Board of Selectmen. If we could please begin by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we will get right to our six o'clock item, making his grand finale. As the current town administrator, going to be giving us the 208 update, and with that...
Yay for the presentation or the finale? I'm not sure which.
The finale of the presentation.
Thanks Eric.
You're welcome.
Waste water. No one wants to talk about wastewater. So, let's just think of it in a different way. Let's talk about this being a discussion about our environment. A lot of us, me included, or our parents, or in some cases, our ancestors, came down here to Cape Cod primarily because of its natural beauty and the beauty of its environment. We came down, we bought homes, we built businesses, hotels, restaurants, invited other people, and just in the simple process of leading our lives, in large measure unbeknownst to us, just leading our lives caused us to contribute towards the denigration of that environment which attracted us here in the first place. When I say unbeknownst to us, you know, it was up until several decades ago that we were led to believe that Title V septic systems actually resolve the issues of disposal of waste. And it turns out that that very simply is not the case. And that's become apparent to us, that there are other contaminants that Title V septic systems, which we thought were effective, are simply insufficiently effective. And what we have is a situation where that environment that we came here to enjoy, in large measure, if we don't take some action, is going to cease to exist. So, the purpose of the presentation tonight really is to give the Board of Selectmen and our community an opportunity to change that course of history and to take action in order to help us preserve that environment, which is why we came here in the first place, and reverse that situation where the environment can be preserved for not only ourselves and our lives, but for the lives of our children and those who follow us. We have a plan. That plan's been in existence now for five years, how to reverse the situation of wastewater contamination and groundwater contamination. However, as effective potentially as that plan was, it failed miserably at town meeting. Inappropriately so, because of its, the costs associated with it. Since that time, five years ago, we've received a new mandate. The obligation that I described before to preserve our environment has been ratified by a new mandate, which indicates that all communities on Cape Cod, now that they're knowledgeable of this degradation of our environment, need to put together a plan in order to reverse that. When I indicated opportunity, however, understanding that the plan that we last proposed to town meeting failed, this alternative is an opportunity only if we can provide you with a plan which is affordable to the community. Because that, of course, was a compelling reason that the last plan didn't pass. This is a blueprint. It's not necessarily the blueprint for that plan. As you know, we have a deadline for submitting a revised plan that does the job. This is a blueprint to do it in a manner which we consider is going to be more affordable and therefore palatable to our community. So, I've asked, we have assembled a team to review this issue over the past several months. That team is of staff that we have onboard currently. We picked them in order to intentionally be a multi-disciplinary team to bring a wide area of expertise into consideration because the problem that we're tackling is a significant one. I've asked each one of the team members to give a presentation on their level of expertise as it relates to this plan. And so first, I'll let you know that my area of expertise, albeit relatively slight, was because I've had an opportunity over the past forty years to lead teams. And the team that's going to present tonight, in my estimation, in my forty years of service to communities, is the best I've ever had the pleasure of working with. And so I look forward to your hearing their presentation. And this is the format briefly that they're going to follow. We're going to step back just for a second and re-quantify the problem. We're going to talk about what the 208 mandate is that I indicated to you briefly. We're then going to take a turn a little bit from wastewater management and talk about the enormous benefits of economic development if we're able to address this concern appropriately. As per your request, we've looked at alternatives to what the original plan was. We are then going to establish affordability goals. And we were very, very aggressive in our affordability goals inasmuch as if this blueprint is the blueprint that we put our entrepreneur, and we decided is ours in the future, it will attain a goal that no other community that I'm aware of has ever been able to achieve in terms of doing a project of this magnitude within the existing tax structure. In order to do so, we did need to modify the plan, as you'll see. We then took a look at cost mitigation in order to drive those costs of the modified plan down. And finally, we've looked at revenue alternatives to the property tax. The presentation tonight will take fifty or sixty minutes. It's long, but frankly, this is probably the most important fiscal challenge this community has ever felt, faced, and nor will ever face in the future. So, we ask your attention for the presentation. We're happy to talk about, in either this meeting or follow-up meetings, any questions you have in that regard. And with that, our first presenter tonight is Bruce Murphy, our Health Director.
Could I just turn your lights on? I think you might pay for better eye contact. Is that okay?
We generally try to avoid eye contact.
Let's make them so.
Thanks. Bruce Murphy, Director of Health. Since nineteen eighty, I have seen the water quality change over the years along with the development within the town. The quantification of the problem is nitrogen in septic system that's in the wastewater. Nitrogen acts as a fertilizer to the algae, where we get algae blooms and affect in the estuaries. State Title V septic systems do not remove nitrogen. The nitrogen can travel right through the septic system that we see here, across sepsia, the house, the septic tank, and the leach field. Nitrogen will go right through and get into the groundwater that heads to the beaches and rivers and into the estuaries. Title V septic systems were designed to remove bacteria. The bacteria is filtered in the sand that's below the leach field, and that gets the bacteria out before it gets in and infect the, any of the estuaries. The Title V septic systems were also not designed to remove any emergent contaminants, such as household products or pharmaceuticals. We must act now, because the nitrogen has been caused by the townwide community and now must be addressed by the townwide community. The controllable nitrogen in the estuaries come from several different areas. The main is septic system wastewater, which is eighty-five percent. And that's probably the, one of the main keys to this, is the septic system wastewater eighty-five percent. The nitrogen, as we can see to the right, where we get algae blooms acting as a fertilizer, you get the algae bloom right there. Other nitrogen within the wastewater, stormwater, from impervious runoff of road runoff and lawn runoff, and also a small percent from fertilization. So, even if we start now, and when we start, it's going to take probably at least twenty years to start seeing results, because groundwater that travels through the soils only travel between twenty, fifty, maybe a hundred feet per year. So, it's going to take a while before we see acceptable levels in the estuaries, back to a healthy estuary. The nitrogen impacts, as I mentioned, affects the algae. The nitrogen acts as a fertilizer, where we can see algae blooms. It's kind of hard to see in these pictures, but I think it shows a little representation of a bloom or a matting on the left that we had a picture of here back in eleven, at Mill Creek. As the algae grows and becomes thicker, it takes the oxygen out of the water, which the fish need, so then we get fish kills. So, then we can see some fish kills that we've seen along Parkers River. The excessive algae also affects swimming, and also affects shell fishing. There we go. So, how do we get, how do we get to this point right now and this effect on our estuaries? Well, as we can take a look, back in nineteen fifty, town was less developed, seasonal, population around three thousand people. We look ahead, sixty years plus later, population's almost twenty-four thousand, lot dense. More septic systems means more nitrogen. We can see twenty-eight now being developed, and South Shore Drive is being developed. So, we see quite a, quite a increase in density. So, we need to remove the nitrogen from the wastewater to have the estuaries return back to a healthy state. Also removing the nitrogen will be a benefit to the shellfish and drinking water quality in the town public wellfields. Okay, right now, on the south side, we have three estuaries. Lewis Bay, that we share with Barnstable. Parkers River, in the middle. And then Bass River, that we share with Dennis. And the upper reaches even go into Howard. The estuaries, the three estuaries that we have, were determined by working with the state through a state grant, and they determine these estuaries. They are marked out right here. This Lewis Bay estuary right here is called a watershed. So, all the homes in this watershed contribute to the Lewis Bay estuary. So, it's just not the houses that live close to Lewis Bay, or Parkers River, or Bass River that affect the estuary. It's everybody, every home, every property, that's up within the watershed that will contribute to the nitrogen. And as you can see, these watersheds go all the way up to about the Mid-Cape Highway. So, it's a large area, so it's people even further away that are contributing to the nitrogen. And we can see the Bass River watershed even goes up across Mid-Cape Highway, around Fallins and Mill Pond, that it's up this way that contributes down. So, how do we figure how much nitrogen's allowed in the estuaries? State did that, they did the determination, they did their studies, and came up with total maximum daily limits, TMDLs, to determine how much nitrogen would be safe in an estuary to have a healthy estuary. So, what we have to look at is how much nitrogen do we have to remove from each of the estuaries to have a healthy estuary? And when we look at Lewis Bay, we see that we have to remove eighty percent of the nitrogen. Parkers River, it's ninety-six percent. Bass River, it's fifty-nine and a half percent. So, you can see that we need to address that, the nitrogen removal, to have healthy estuaries. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to my next speaker.
Good evening. So, Bruce has described the environmental issue, and clearly, with a project of this magnitude, we want to understand what the legal context is as well. The environmental regulations come from the Clean Water Act, and Section 208 of the Clean Water Act addresses wastewater management treatment obligations of local communities. The town of Yarmouth is a designated wastewater management treatment agency, so it falls on the town of Yarmouth to comply with the wastewater treatment required to keep our freshwater and saltwater bodies healthy. There is some really good news here, in that although there is a mandate that the nitrogen be treated and removed, the result of the lawsuit that you are probably familiar with and the public is generally familiar with, it was a Conservation Law Foundation suit against the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and the Mass Department of Environmental Protection for failure to enforce the Clean Water Act. And the result of that suit was a settlement agreement. The settlement agreement basically says the regulatory agencies are going to enforce the Clean Water Act. And the next step in that process is for each of the towns of Cape Cod to submit an update to their so-called Section 208 wastewater treatment management plan. That's really soon, June, but it's an update to a plan, and it's a conceptual plan. So, this is not a mandate that we run to town meeting and ask for millions of dollars to rush a treatment solution. It's not that at all. The regulatory agencies so far are affording the communities the latitude to determine what the best treatment options are and what a realistic timeframe for implementation is. So, that is a window of opportunity that we want to be sure we take advantage of, because it enables us to look to address Board of Selectmen goals as we implement a wastewater treatment plan. Two specific goals. Clearly affordability is the big gorilla. We need to make sure that our plan is affordable and extending the construction timeline is the first and one of the most important things that we need to do in order to make a treatment plan affordable. The second piece is that we want to make sure to front-load the economic development impacts of this plan. And by having, retaining control of how and when we pursue wastewater treatment, we can do that. We can front-load the economic development impact. So, I'm going to hand it off now to Kathy Williams to describe more specifically how we can achieve economic development benefits and what those economic development benefits are.
I'm Kathy Williams. I'm Yarmouth's Town Planner, and I also happen to be a registered professional engineer. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about economic development and how a municipal wastewater solution's going to help us with that. I spent a lot of my time trying to make Yarmouth successful. A lot of my efforts go into trying to revitalize and beautify Route 28. To that end, we've spent a lot of time with some very proactive zoning amendments that allow a lot of different uses by right, allows for increased densities. We have a growth incentive zone, which really limits the commission's review for motel properties. And we've also had a lot of actual direct subsidies to try and promote economic development. So, why are we trying to do this? Why are we working so hard? Because we really want to be able to grow our tax base without growing our tax rate. So, whenever anybody comes and they improve their property and increase the value of their property, that increases the tax revenue to the town of Yarmouth. So, if we have someone come in and redevelop their property, and they added an additional million dollars to the value of their property, that's ten thousand dollars, which we get an increase in levy annually to the town. And just some examples for you, when the Hampton Inn developed a few years ago, they brought in twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of additional income to the levy from that redevelopment of that project. We have Maplewood at Mayflower Place, which is coming very soon, and they're planning on investing twenty-three million dollars in the town of Yarmouth for fifty-one unit assisted living and seventy-five-bed memory care facility. That's going to bring two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars worth of additional revenue annually to the town of Yarmouth. Economic development also helps us provide room and meals tax revenue. Right now, we have about approximately three million dollars of revenue coming from that stream. Again, using the Hampton Inn as an example, that was, when it was the Americana, it was a hundred and thirty-six rooms. It's still the same number of rooms, yet they're higher-quality rooms. We get more money for those rooms. They also have a higher occupancy rate. That all generates and results in additional rooms tax revenue. And as we are having our commercial properties be redeveloped and increase in value, that's going to help soften the residential tax burden to our residents, which is very important. Economic development also helps promote job creation. As we get redevelopment, we get bigger and better jobs, and that results in people having increased salaries. In addition to the jobs that get created, we also have jobs from construction, from the actual physical redevelopment and reconstruction of those properties. And then there's the indirect fiscal impacts that we get. As people have salaries and have money, they're going to come, and they're going to spend that money on businesses and services in the town of Yarmouth. And ultimately, economic development, and this is my favorite, it beautifies our town. This is a case where you can see a picture there, of some pictures of the former cavalier and the former Cape Cod vacation condos. And this is what people see. This is what our residents see, and this is what visitors see when they drive down Route 28. You see these blighted and vacant properties. And we really want to have some economic development in order to redevelop these properties and also redevelop them under our current higher design standards. So, the sites are going to be designed better. The architecture's going to be better. We're going to have more landscape. And why do we want to beautify Route 28? Because we want to be successful. If we look successful, we're going to be promoting and encouraging more people to come to town and invest their dollars in the town of Yarmouth. So, how is municipal wastewater going to help us reach this vision of a revitalized and prosperous Route 28? It's going to help us by making projects financially feasible. When developers come to town, they're not philanthropists. They expect to make a profit on their projects. They're also looking for projects that are relatively simple to develop and have a certain reasonable expectation of success. Municipal wastewater does that by decreasing the complexity and allowing for more opportunities. Right now, when someone has a project and they have more than ten thousand gallons per day of wastewater flow, that requires them to construct a wastewater treatment facility. Wastewater treatment facilities cost over a million dollars. It's something like triple the cost that it would be for a conventional system. So, that's an additional cost that needs to be borne by the developer. If you have some properties, like we do in West Yarmouth, some hotel properties that are in the protective zone two for the drinking water wells in Barnstable, that restricts what they can do on site, because they cannot increase their wastewater flows on those particular properties. So, it really impacts how much they can develop their property. And if they can't develop it to a certain level, it impacts their financial feasibility of that project. And ultimately, when people come to town, they're in the restaurant business. They're in the hotel business. They're in the retail business. They don't want to be in the wastewater business. They don't know that business. It's a complexity, and quite frankly, probably an aggravation to them that they would like to avoid. Municipal wastewater is also going to help us with our problem on Cape Cod, where we have a lot of our young people leaving the Cape, and our workforce leaving the Cape, because they can't find jobs. So, if we can increase redevelopment and increase different types of job opportunities for people, we're going to be able to keep those people on Cape Cod. Municipal wastewater might also start making some housing projects more financially feasible, which will get affordable housing for young adults and for workforce labor. And one of the ultimate things that we're talking about is municipal wastewater is a huge economic boon. It's going to be a significant infrastructure project for the entire Cape. It's going to be billions of dollars Cape-wide over the next fifty or sixty years. And that's going to be a huge influx of money into our economy. Ultimately, municipal wastewater is going to help make Yarmouth more competitive. Right now, developers, especially developers and larger developers off Cape, have an expectation of municipal wastewater. So, it will help us be more competitive. In addition, as we redevelop and our properties become nicer, we're going to also be more competitive as a vacation destination with other Cape towns. And ultimately, municipal wastewater improves redevelopment, improves economic development, so we can start getting rid of some of those blighted properties. And as we start getting rid of those, we get people coming and investing, and Yarmouth's looking nice, it's going to encourage more people to come and say, "Someone invested in Yarmouth? I see they're being successful. I'm going to come, and I'm going to invest in Yarmouth." And ultimately, what we want to do with municipal wastewater is we want to preserve our environment, because we have an economic, tourist economy right now. And if we don't have a beautiful iconic Cape Cod for people to come to, they're not going to come anymore. And lots of the reasons we all came to live here is because of that beauty and that quality of life that we get provided here. So, we need to protect our economy, we need to protect our environment, and we need to steward Cape Cod for future generations. Now, I'm going to hand it over to Ed Centio.
Hello, my name is Ed Centio. I'm the town's Finance Director, and I'm a town resident. My background is as an employee and a consultant for mostly Fortune 500 companies. My experience includes financial analysis, business rescue, and business development. These activities include managing systems development, which normally incorporates decision support systems. And during my career, I've done a lot of data modeling. One of my roles in the town of Yarmouth is to control the cost of government. As Rich B. Endenew indicated during a recent board presentation related to the fire and police overtime, Yarmouth is recognized both on and off the Cape as having advanced decision support systems so that we can make better decisions as we try to manage our government. During the Yarmouth's previous look at wastewater, we combined our assessing data with our water data. Subsequently, we provided those modeling tools to the Cape Cod Commission, and we also provided our data to the Cape Cod Commission. And they used that same philosophy as they developed their tools for the rest of the Cape. As part of the Board of Selectmen's due diligence request related to wastewater, we were asked to provide information on the alternatives to centralized sewer systems. The chart shows water treatment alternatives in order of their effectiveness in removing nitrogen. The cost in nitrogen removal estimates shown for each alternative are from the Cape Cod Commission's three-million-dollar 208 study. Our wastewater consultant, C.D.M. Smith, has reviewed the cost in nitrogen removal estimates from the 208 Commission, and they agree with the information provided by the Cape Cod Commission. So, that's the basis of the analysis that we took. And right now, what we're doing is we're taking those different elements and we're utilizing Yarmouth-specific information to analyze the different cost in nitrogen removal alternatives. What I'm going to do first is try to review this fairly intense slide. On the first column, column one, actually goes through the different wastewater treatment types or alternatives that we analyzed. Column number two shows the purchase and install cost for the different alternatives, and that's in millions of dollars for the entire affected area. Column number three is... are the yearly maintenance costs for those different alternatives. And then column number four, again, is the nitrogen removal ranges for the different alternatives that we've analyzed. And as you'll see below, and as Bruce described in many of the areas, also in the areas that had a lower total nitrogen removal estimate, there are concentrations of nitrogen that we have to remove that are in the 80% to 96% range. When we look at the first alternative, that's the aquaculture alternative. Aquaculture has issues, including disease, warm water, the quantity of shellfish needed, and the labor related to making this viable alternative. Under any circumstances, this is seen as a polishing step to remove the last amounts of nitrogen to get to the target levels of nitrogen. Title V, which is the current predominant method of treatment that results in a good job, as Bruce indicated, at removing bacteria getting into our water supply, but it does very little to remove nitrogen. And the Title V maintenance number in this chart doesn't include the periodic replacement of Title V systems when they fail. Innovative alternatives, the upgrades to Title V are adequate in addressing... are not... are inadequate in addressing the magnitude of Yarmouth's nitrogen problem, but they do do a better job than Title V. And we get to incinerating toilets. When we look at the data for incinerating toilets, the information that we have in terms of the cost to install and the maintenance includes numbers from our residential properties. Our assessing data does not have numbers of bathrooms or toilets related to commercial properties. So the costs are underestimated. This alternative would require a mandate from the Board of Health to use incinerating toilets. Other communities have tried to give away incinerating toilets with no takers. While this is the most cost-effective option, there may not be a desire within the community to switch out their current toilet systems to innovative altern... to incinerating toilets, I'm sorry. Clustered treatment systems is the next option. It gets closer to the nitrogen removal levels that we're looking for, but it's at a much higher purchase and installation cost, as well as the yearly maintenance is fairly high as well. For all but the centralized sewer option, we are using the best-case scenarios from the Cape Cod Commission study to put the alternatives in their best light. Satellite treatment systems also have very large initial investments to install those systems, but the maintenance costs are a bit better than some of the other alternatives that get closer to the levels of nitrogen that we're looking to remove. And then we get to centralized sewer options. The estimates are the cost we have developed within our plan, working with CDM Smith, to be more conservative. As part of the presentation, the team will actually illustrate how we can look to reduce creatively some of those costs to even lower than what we're showing here. This slide actually gives you an indication of the economies of scale related to building fewer facilities, relates to building and maintaining fewer facilities. Our study shows that centralized treatment... the centralized treatment option is the most cost-effective approach to reducing nitrogen. This results, again, from the economies of scale and the treatment levels required. Our estimated cost for centralized sewer treatment facilities is $370 million. I believe you may recall that in the previous analysis, you saw a lower number. This is the cost to treat nearly two-thirds of the town. The DEP has given us, as Bruce indicated, the nitrogen removal estimates for the Bass River, which we didn't have when we first presented these numbers. Prior to moving on to subsequent phases as we would roll out a system like this, we would use an adaptive management plan. We would use testing to ensure that we are hitting the nitrogen targets before we actually implemented any subsequent phases. In addition, many estuaries will require not only treating nitrogen, but in order to get to the appropriate levels of nitrogen, treated effluent has to be removed from that watershed area. The treated effluent also contains some levels of nitrogen in some watersheds. Even that level of nitrogen is not something that we can put back into that watershed. The team will now present the work they've done to mitigate the impact of costs and to put the project in perspective with other municipal infrastructure projects delivered in Yarmouth. And I'm going to turn this over to Dan Mills, and this is the slide of the $370 million in the total treatment costs for central sewers.
Good evening, I'm Dan Mills, Water Superintendent for the town of Yarmouth. I have drinking water industry experience for 38 years, 18 of which have been here with the town of Yarmouth. Yarmouth Water Department has grown along with the population to the point where we now serve entirely... nearly the entire town. We have a water system which typically will supply 1.4 billion gallons of water annually to the residents and visitors of the town. The water system's assets are in excess of $250 million. And over the 75 years that the Water Department's been in existence, we've grown and maintained your water system. During that time, we've installed 256 miles of water mains. We've acquired 1,000 acres of land for wealth-held protection. We've built 24 pump stations and 17 treatment facilities. We built three water storage tanks, which replaced smaller antiquated tanks. And most importantly, we've accomplished this for the town's residents at an affordable cost within the affordable rate structure. As a member of the wastewater team, I believe that the plan the team is presenting this evening, if adopted, will set the town on a successful path which provides wastewater solutions in the same manner that the Water Department has successfully built a first-class water system for the residents of the town of Yarmouth. Your water system wasn't built overnight. But with careful planning, financial support of the town's residents... the residents... of the town's residents over the past 75 years, we can do the same with wastewater solutions. I believe we can do the same with wastewater solutions. Thank you. I'll pass it on to Robie Whitehouse to speak about wastewater affordability goals.
Thank you, Dan. My name is Robie Whitehouse. I work for the Yarmouth DPW as an administrative supervisor. I'm also the supervisor for the waste management facility. I have been an employee of the town of Yarmouth for over 17 years. I'm not only a town of Yarmouth employee, I'm also a Cape Codder. I was born here, and I have a very short historic family line, not as long as some of those present in the room, I'm sure. I mention this because my mom was born here in 1926, before town water, as Dan mentioned, before the roads were paved. She remembers the Cape when the population was much different than it is now, as Bruce referenced in the maps earlier, as some of you might remember as well. Mom has told me of her memories of growing up on the Cape in the 20s and the trips to Boston on the bumpy roads to sell fish that her father caught to earn a living here, and how she worked in fish houses to make money so she could afford to go roller skating. She felt that sewers... I asked her recently how she felt about sewers coming to Cape Cod. Now, remember, this lady's 89 years old. She said to me, "It's about time we cleaned up the mess we've made." As a Yarmouth resident and homeowner, I can tell you firsthand that this team has made it a priority to find an affordable solution to Yarmouth's wastewater issues, for you and for me. The goals of this group is to find... excuse me. The goals of the team have included finding possible solutions to Yarmouth's wastewater issues without an increase in tax property... property tax, without betterments, without connection fees, and with an affordable utility rate, with a fair cost distribution. And here's Peter to give you some examples of how we can accomplish these goals.
In the 20 years that I've been involved in municipal finance and capital planning, I've become familiar with a wide range of approaches to procurement, contracting out, using in-house labor to avoid prevailing wage laws, using alternative funding sources, pursuing grants, incorporating private fundraising into capital projects. We are going to need to turn every rock if we are going to make this project affordable because the magnitude of the project is such that it's going to require maximum creativity, and we are going to need to do everything we possibly can in order to make this affordable. And I, for one, don't want to be the one to go to Robie and her mom and say, "I'm sorry, we fell short." I think we can do that. And it's going to take a... it's going to take a team effort, and it's going to take a number of different strategies. So let's talk about the size of the problem. The first opportunity that we have, as I alluded to earlier, is to take the project and build it over a timeframe that is longer than has been previously conceived. We're looking at a 55-year construction period. So that is the first and a pretty significant thing that we can do to make the project more affordable. The $370 million constructed over that 55-year period results in a peak debt service of $7.9 million, and that has a tax impact of $469 per year. That's where a lot of communities would stop short and say, "Okay, there it is. That's the cost of the project. We understand. We can't do that." Not only did Robie say that in order for this project to be affordable, we have to eliminate a property tax impact, she also said we have to eliminate connection fees because that's an added cost, an added hassle for homeowners and businesses to take on as part of a sewer project. So before we can make it more affordable, we have to increase the size of our problem. We now have a $427 million project once we absorb all of those household connection costs, connection fees. So that translates in the peak year to a debt service of $8.9 million. So I'm going to step through a couple of cost mitigation options, and then we're going to talk about the changes to the project phasing plan, and Rich is then going to come back and talk about revenue sources. So let's start with the cost mitigation. The first one is a regional approach. I'm going to talk about that in some detail. Secondly, road resurfacing. You may recall that from the last time around. The last two are smaller, and we have not incorporated any estimated savings in the slides that we're about to show you from these last two areas. Alternative procurement methods. We will look at, pursue, and advocate for a regional procurement plan. If we can line up the timelines and get agreement with other communities, we might be able to go out to bid on two treatment plants for two different communities, and there may be some economy of scale there, there may be some better pricing there. There are also some procurement approaches that are allowed within the law where we may be able to drive the cost down. Construction manager at risk is one of those costs, one of those concepts, where you give the general contractor an incentive to participate in the design process and expedite the schedule and reduce the cost. Finally, grant opportunities. We will clearly be pursuing every one. I will be addressing State Revolving Fund, which is, in some sense, a grant opportunity. But there are some others out there, USDA, small grants, and there may be other ones related to economic stimulus, economic development, that may come along. And as I said, we will certainly explore every option. So regionalization. The initial look, working with our consulting engineer, CDM, indicates that we have a terrific potential opportunity to save money for the town of Dennis and Yarmouth simultaneously by pursuing a regional approach, specifically where there's one treatment plant hosted by the town of Yarmouth that serves to treat the sewage from both communities. There's also another facility, which is the recharge facility. Where does that treated effluent go? How does it get back into the groundwater? We may be able to host that facility for Dennis as well. So there are a couple of ways that we drive down the cost of this project with the regional approach. First is just, you know, building one treatment plant instead of two and sharing that cost would save both towns millions of dollars. Secondly, it saves operating costs, again, millions of dollars. Thirdly, by hosting the facilities, we would be impacting our community. We would be having the treatment here, and we would expect to receive a host fee in exchange for hosting the facility and being responsible for the management of those operations. So this is an estimate of what we might save by the combination of all of those things, and it drives the price down considerably from the $427 you saw before to $305 million. And now, our peak annual debt service is down to $7.1 million. Moving in the right direction, still a long way to go. Another small but significant piece. A large portion of the cost of building a sewer system is pavement. You got to tear up the pavement, and you got to put the pavement back. Well, we spend $2 million a year on paving because we have to in order to keep up with it. If we're paving roads on a consistent basis every year for 55 years, that's going to reduce our paving costs. Essentially, you know, you pave the road once, and once it's paved, you know, it has a lifespan of some 20 years before it needs to be repaved again. So we estimate about $750,000 of existing money that we use to pave roads now can be put toward the cost of this project, and that brings the price tag down to $6.4 million, peak annual debt service. Finally, a big grant opportunity, if you will, state funding opportunity, is through the State Revolving Fund, a competitive grant to provide up to 25% capital forgiveness. That is to say, the state picks up 25% of the capital cost. That is an opportunity that is now available. Our estimates are that, you know, we would certainly apply for them. We think we would have a great case to make if we move in a reasonable timeframe. Our estimates do not assume that we qualify for that all the way through the 55 years of construction, just for the first two phases. And that brings our peak debt service down to $5.6 million. So at this point, we've made good progress on our affordability goals. We obviously have a long way to go to get that $5.7 million down to zero. Rich, as I said, is going to come back to that, but before we do that, we want to talk about the first phase of the project and how the phasing has been modified. And Jeff Colby will do that.
Thank you, Peter. I'm Jeff Colby, your DPW Director. My background is in construction engineering. As a registered professional engineer, I have public and private sector construction, as well as wastewater experience, and extensive sewer construction management experience in Chatham, which is another community that has struggled with these same environmental challenges and solved them through the sewer project. As far as this project modification that Peter referenced, this project team that you have before you tonight has taken a fresh look at this challenge. And the primary project change is the implementation of when and which areas might be sewed. This project modification focuses on economic development areas within that initial phase of sewer-ing, also with an accelerated user base. The high-flow users are connected early on in this implementation plan. This plan also, as you've heard previously, now addresses three watersheds, Lewis Bay, Parker's River, and Bass River, which was not previously included in the previous plan. And this plan now includes, as you've heard from previous speakers, the connection costs as well. So what does that look like? This is the graphical first phase. As an engineer, I like to see the plan laid out before us, and this is one concept that goes along Route 28 from the Barnstable town line to the Dennis town line. Does have appendages that go down to South Shore Drive, as you can see down here, and then also up West Yarmouth Road to a potential treatment facility on Buck Island Road, where the Water Department offices are. This is the initial phase on approximately 10 phases. This phase... This phase would cover approximately 400 of the sewer connections of the more than 11,000 that would potentially need to be connected in those three watersheds that I just mentioned. As discussed, this is a different implementation plan than you previously saw. This is a backbone implementation approach, installing gravity sewer along that corridor on 28 and making some easy connections along some of those adjacent neighborhoods that would also be serviced by gravity as well. Gravity sewer would be maximized according to this plan. Those are connections that tend to be cheaper to make as well as to maintain and so we would look to maximize those approaches. The sewer-ing along that entire stretch would also facilitate the regional partnering that you heard about previously with either Barnstable or the town of Dennis. This would also allow for an adaptive management approach, which Ed mentioned previously, which we would construct this corridor and then test and monitor the waters within the embayments to help us determine which additional areas would need to be sewed and in which order. And that's what is the basis of the adaptive management approach. And I will end with the, a similar plan to this backbone approach as well as a sewer treatment facility construction was recently implemented in the town of Chatham very successfully. Now Rich will come up and talk about financing options.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening. My name is Rich Bianveneux and I am the town accountant for the town of Yarmouth. Prior to coming to town two years ago, I had about 20 years' experience in the private sector, mostly doing auditing and consulting on financial matters for cities and towns in southeastern Massachusetts and south, southern New England, as well as working with developers and economic development agencies and business owners to do financial modeling, project feasibility and planning for their developments. So my role as a town accountant, my role on this team really was kind of utilize my experience to analyze and plan the, these projects to ensure that there's a sound financing plan in place. And of course, one of the key things here was affordability and avoiding an impact to the tax rate. Subsequently, a key part of my role is going to be, once we have a concept in place and we're moving forward, is to ensure that the details get worked out. There's a lot of moving parts to this financing plan and to the plan as a whole and I'll be one of the people that's responsible for making sure those details get implemented as they need to be implemented. And then finally, myself and the accounting office and the finance department as a whole really plays a pretty key role and, and once any degree of funding is authorized and budgets are adopted, to monitor those budgets and make sure these projects get delivered within the funding authorized. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you about the financing options. As indicated by Peter, absent any planning, financial planning, the tax impact of this is about $230 million. It doesn't meet the affordability goals of the board of selectmen or the residents and as Robie described, doesn't meet hers as well. So we had to come up with a menu of options. What could we do to mitigate a, a tax rate impact? And also there is taxpayer, what we consider a taxpayer equity issue. Wastewater is a town-wide problem, a regional problem, and remedying it requires a town-wide solution and a regional solution. And so we just ask ourselves a basic question, should only those who are required to implement be required to pay? Those connecting certainly are driving a benefit, but they're not driving all the benefit that the community would experience. So as we list our menu of options here for how to finance this, we take that into consideration where we can. While we implement this menu of options, we think we can address the affordability goals and get our tax, property tax impact down to zero. How are we going to do that? Our first thing, which is the easiest for us to implement and is currently existing, is we have several bonds outstanding currently. We have a capital facility plan that goes out for 10 years and we're utilizing our current debt drop-off to finance that capital facility plan. But above and beyond that, as that debt drops off once again after the completion of that plan, we'll be able to steward that debt and utilize it to pay for the ongoing sewer projects. We anticipate that to generate about $2 million annually in debt drop-off. I'm going to go through each of these options briefly and then I'll show, illustrate graphically the results of these to you. We have an opportunity to generate some savings through our current septic operation and particularly if we were able to consolidate our water, sewer and septic into one business-type activity to generate some savings from that. We anticipate that to generate about $500,000. It's important to note however, that this isn't an ongoing thing. This might be for perhaps a 10-year period. So it results in a very small amount of funding on the total 270 million, but it's an important piece of the funding because it starts early on in the process and, and you'll see the issue we have with being able to bank or pre-fund some of these revenue options prior to incurring some costs and how that's going to affect our tax rate. We anticipate having to charge a user fee for offering the sewer service and Robie will talk about the affordability of that rate, but we think we have the flexibility in the room to add a 25% surcharge on top of that rate, keep it affordable, and use that 25% surcharge to pay for the capital cost of the facilities. One of the things that's been done in the last several years to give a tool of local communities is a state passed a law that allows a local option for each town to adopt called the Wastewater Infrastructure Reinvestment Fund and operates similar to the CPA fund in that you're allowed to levy up to 3% property tax surcharge and add it to your tax bills. Now, we're not proposing that we would add additional property tax. That doesn't meet with our mandate or with our goals. However, it does give us an opportunity to perhaps repurpose currently recharged 3% CPA tax, tax surcharge and in beginning of fiscal year 2020, could we perhaps repurpose half of that or one and a half percent and utilize that for wastewater costs? If we were to do that, that would generate about $750,000 annually that we could put towards wastewater financing. We could utilize that Wastewater Infrastructure Reinvestment Fund to help steward our debt service and add it to that over time. And finally, a novel idea here has to do with the real estate transfer tax. The consideration here is that there's been people that may have lived in town for 10, 20, 30 or longer years and have contributed to the problem and have the opportunity to leave town before they could contribute to anything towards the solution of the problem. And so the theory here is a sale or a transfer of a property, could we add a 1% tax on top of that, a transfer tax, similar to what happens in other communities for other, you know, for other purposes, but similar type of mechanism? And if we were able to do that, perhaps we could generate as much as $1 million annually from that revenue source. Of course, there's a lot of details to be worked out and any local option or local would require some sort of special legislation in which could be crafted either locally or regionally and we could put in all kinds of options and caveats into that. But as the menu provides, we're trying to calculate about $1 million of revenue from that annually. You'll notice I have betterments on the list. We are proposing to do this with no betterments and the caveat to all of these is that this is a menu of options. If any of these cost mitigating factors that Peter had described do not pan out or if somebody doesn't like one of the revenue options we have listed here, we have the opportunity to do something different, but whatever gets dropped needs to be replaced by something. This isn't an all encompassing list. This could perhaps be a growing list of options that we could develop over time. So as of today, where do we stand with the options we proposed? Now, let me show you the impact of all of these graphically. Are we starting with Peter's last slide showing in 2048, it was a $5.6 million, just about tax impact. Here we are applying the application of our debt drop-off of $2 million, which brings our peak debt service to about, from 5.6 to just about a $3.5 million net tax impact. So we still have quite a bit of gap between our costs and zero tax impact. So we need to build upon this using our menu of options. Doesn't look like much here. A little underwhelming, but here's the $500,000 of septic, septic savings and consolidation savings that perhaps we could realize. It doesn't add much to the total savings. It's still 3.5 million property tax impact in 2048, but you'll notice that this savings can start before the costs are incurred, which becomes important because if this is a path that we're going to take, we need to know this and we need to bank this ahead of the time. And you'll see why in a couple of slides. Here we are adding the cumulative slide showing the septic savings, the debt drop-off, and this purplish portion showing the impact of a 25% user rate surcharge to go for capital construction cost repayment. We're getting closer. We're down to $1.9 million at our peak in 2048. Here we are adding our repurposed CPA surcharge, taking half of that or about $750,000 and adding it to our wastewater reinvestment fund, providing financing, providing revenue to finance this cost. And now we've dropped our tax impact to just over $1.2 million in 2048. We're getting closer, but not quite there. And so using our last tool on our menu, last option on our menu, we're adding in our, this slide shows the effect of the real estate transfer tax of about $1 million. And you'll notice at our peak debt service in 2048, we've just about covered about $200,000 of tax impact in that year. You'll also notice on this slide that once we get past that peak year, our costs drop and, but we still have these revenues. And so that raises an interesting question whenever we get to that point is what could we do? And there's lots of thoughts out there we'll have to finalize, but obviously there would need to be reinvestment and repairs and maintenance to the facilities over the years and perhaps some of that could go towards that. Perhaps one would be inclined to want to sunset a repurposing of CPA or sunset a real estate transfer tax and those could be potential options once we got further out in time. Now, we still haven't addressed the whole problem though. We have a couple peaks here in 2048, down the middle, halfway through there, and at the beginning of the project where we don't, haven't covered all the property tax impacts. But notice, our septic revenues, our real estate transfer tax, and our CPA repurposed funds are all starting prior to the incurrence of costs, debt service. If we steward those funds, here are the years where we have a total of about $5 million of property tax impact. Through our septic savings, our pre-funding of our CPA repurposing and pre-funding through real estate transfer tax, we ought to be able to bank more than the $5 million to apply to these years where we have peaks in the, spikes in the property tax through the debt service. So I think we've demonstrated that it's possible that we can do this. It requires a lot of work and a massaging, a lot of the details, but this is our concept. And with that, I'm going to bring it, invite Robie Whitehouse to come back and summarize our plan.
The presentation you've just seen shows how the town of Yarmouth can build a centralized treatment infrastructure that will be a wastewater solution with minimal impact. By spreading payments over several years, by taking advantage of regional options and mitigation tax revenues, these options combined can result in an affordable solution to Yarmouth's nitrogen contamination. A solution that is affordable without property tax impact, without connection costs, eliminating Title V septic replacements and pumping costs for those who connect to the system without This sewer utility will have some similar affordable user costs like Yarmouth's water utility bills, as the sewer utility cost is also based on water usage. This sewer utility cost will offset all operating and maintenance costs for the sewer operations. We expect the average residential sewer user cost would be less than $50 per month. This rate is consistent with other sewer utility rates. And here's Sean to wrap up our presentation.
I'm Sean McInnes, your IT director here in town. I'm also a registered professional engineer with experience in wastewater and permitting. You never have too many engineers.
I guess. Who do?
I do.
Well, as you can see, this presentation has covered quite a bit tonight, so I just wanted to go over what you've seen and heard and try to help you tie it in together. Initially, you saw Bruce come up here and talk about the impact nitrogen has had on the town of Yarmouth and the Cape as a whole. He explained the main cause of nitrogen in our estuaries is from septic systems and he also explained that traditional Title V septic systems aren't doing anything to resolve the issue. So Yarmouth really needs to act now. Peter came up and gave a great explanation about why we need to act now with the EPA and DEP mandates on all of Cape Cod. We really need to act and then the one benefit is that by being proactive, as the town of Yarmouth usually is, we get to cover, control our own plan. Kathy gave up and gave a great explanation of the economic impacts of a wastewater treatment system in the town of Yarmouth. It promotes economic development, revitalization and job creation for, you know, the foreseeable future. Ed gave a thorough examination of every option just to show you in the town that we've, we've really looked at every alternative out there to treat this nitrogen issue. It really came down to when we looked at all the numbers and all the alternatives that the centralized treatment plant was the best solution. Dan, the water superintendent, gave up and he gave a great example of, you know, how the wastewater treatment system is not that different from the current water system in its scope and cost over the years. And then Robie, I think she did a great example as a town resident. She was great to have on the team because she could really relay what the residents are looking for. I mean, they really want a system that's affordable and equitable for everybody. Peter came up again and he reviewed the cost of implementing this plan. It is a daunting task, to say the least, but I think Peter's showing that it can be financed over the long term, really helps alleviate some of that burden and then also going over a lot of the cost mitigation factors that are really viable, showed that the cost can be reduced quite a bit. Jeff, the DPW director, came in and he's got great experience in wastewater already. He showed that modifying the existing plan to a new project plan that provides a backbone for all of 28 would really help enhance economic development for the whole town. And then lastly, Rich gave a great example of some revenue options the town has to cover the costs after the cost mitigation factors that Peter talked about. These are real nice revenue options and to really look at the big picture and say, you know, the team has done a lot to show you some great alternatives and to show you how this whole system can be paid for without a tax impact on the residents is, is quite a feat. So in the end, I think you've seen that this team has demonstrated that this, this new solution is environmentally sound, it's necessary for the Yarmouth's long-term economic viability and it's affordable and equitable for the taxpayers. So with that, I'll leave it to Bill to wrap it up.
Well, thank you, team. I appreciate it. Another member of our team who did not present tonight, as you know, is David Young. David has acted as our technical advisor for the last several months going through the process. Where does that leave us? As we indicated before, we have a deadline. We have a plan and we have an opportunity to modify that plan and we hope you gave, we gave you a concept tonight that would be acceptable in that regard. But one way or another, the community needs to submit a revised, excuse me, 208 concept plan and we're able to do that by simply, a little bit more easily modifying the existing plan. And we have several months to discuss whether or not this concept meets your approval. With that, we'll end the presentation, turn back on the lights and take any questions you may have either tonight or in subsequent meetings.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you to everyone who worked so hard on this presentation. It's a lot to absorb. I'll go to the board. Like I said, it is a tremendous amount to absorb. Like I said, it is a tremendous amount to absorb, and there are probably more questions than, we could probably wrap around, our heads around tonight. But Mike, any knee-jerk reactions or questions?
Well, I do have some questions, but before that, Bill, just in general terms, and what did they do in Chatham in terms of financing options when they steward Chatham?
I haven't come up with an original idea in most of my career, Mike, and so most of what you saw here, we had first proposed in Chatham. And so a lot of these components, the debt drop-off, which was not commonly used by communities until we started in Chatham, the markup on the O&amp;M costs, or the rates themselves, which was used in Chatham, we took into consideration the roads as well. We took into consideration a real estate transfer tax, and we weren't able to achieve it. As you know, the state legislature is reluctant to authorize communities to have funding sources that they don't control, the state doesn't control. We made an attempt in Chatham to get special legislation which would enable a real estate transfer tax for this purpose, and we were rejected, never got further than committee, actually. But a lot has changed. That was almost 10 years ago, and a lot has changed. I remember when we first talked about this five years ago, Tracy and I talked at some length about affordability of this issue and what we as taxpayers need to come up with in order to resolve the issue, and it was generally thought that the state or the federal government is going to have to do what they did decades ago, and that's bail communities out. That hasn't materialized entirely, but the state has taken two specific actions over the past 10 years. It leads me to believe that they may be amenable to authorizing a real estate transfer tax. The first, Rich indicated to you, we have a 3% surtax that was just enacted the past 18 months, giving communities an opportunity to charge a surtax for this purpose. Now, in our plan, we don't want to charge a surtax because your goal is to not increase the property tax levy, but we're looking at funding that using alternative sources of CPA and then debt drop-off. The second action they've taken is actually implementing and putting cash behind the 25% capital forgiveness program. That's significant. It's not 95%, which we had 30 years ago, but it's a start. The state has indicated they will forgive 25% of wastewater costs for communities that choose to implement plans such as this. Those two activities hadn't happened when Chatham's attempt at a real estate transfer tax failed. It gives us some hope that the legislature now will authorize that. In addition to that, we're finally coming to grips, after decades, that the Cape needs to take action in a concerted fashion in this regard. Well, the 208 process has been accepted by a lot, panned by others, but what it has done is it brought communities together to the inevitability of addressing this issue together as a regional entity, as opposed to a single town with a population of 7,000 people like Chatham was. I think we can bring some pressure to bear in order to get special legislation passed as a local option by any communities that chooses to use it. So that was unsuccessful in Chatham, and is part of our plan here, and we think it's a viable alternative.
You know, this is probably speculation, but you think that if you were able to get that legislative approval, there was public support for that 1% exit tax, so to speak?
Yeah, I think so. Rich started to mention it. Let me use myself as an example. I've been down here for 30 years. I've owned houses for that period of time. When I left and came back, I bought a house when I came back 20 years ago and worked in Chatham. Well, that house value has doubled over the past 20 years. I have some nice equity in that house right now, and if I retire and leave the Cape, I've contributed to a problem for 20 years, and I'm not leaving you with any money to affect a solution. So in terms of the fairness and equity, not only is it affordable, because normally when you turn a house, you have gained some equity, but also in terms of the fairness issue, it seems to make sense. But let me put it in relative terms. Right now, if I sell my house, if I do, I'm going to pay a Realtor 4% or 5% of the value of my home as a commission for their work to liquidate that house. Okay, they're doing good work in order to expedite that sale, but we're talking about taking 1%, 1% to help resolve an issue that frankly, the residents are responsible for. And so we think it's fair. Will that succeed in passing a town meeting or a ballot question? Well, any new tax is difficult, but we're looking at all of our menus as alternative to property taxes. And so we're not looking at these in order to generate new revenue sources, but to offset the inevitable increases in property tax that most other communities are just paying for these costs with.
The other question I had is, in terms of the, what's the legal status of being able to repurpose half of these 3% surcharge? What do you have to do legally to be able to do that?
Well, first of all, you can't do it now. We won't be able to do it until FY '20, FY '20, and so you need to take a vote of town meeting in order to do so, and I believe it needs to be a ballot question as well. And those are the repurposing votes that are necessary to do that. We had anticipated, some of our rationale for looking at this just as a concept, is that the purposes for the original CPA passed quite some time ago was a lot of investment in open space. That's no longer as germane as it once was, and we feel that the preservation of the environment inherent in that choice to purchase open space is duplicated by this, to preserve our environment.
Wouldn't you still, though, have to allocate the balance in relation to the percentages that the statute requires?
Absolutely. The legislation would not change, so you'd have to put the balance, half as much as you do now, towards the four purposes authorized, affordable housing, open space as well, historic preservation, and now recreation. So you'd have half as much. Now, last week, you saw our presentation, we're spending $3.7 million in CPA for various purposes, and so that amount would reduce by half. We have balances in our accounts that we haven't spent as well. All of that is just data. The real issue here is, do you want to ask for more money from the taxpayers or repurpose what you've already asked them to give you? And so we think that when you compare your issues, and a lot of the criticism of CPA in the years past is that our real funding needs in the town are education and fire and police, and so shouldn't be segregated automatically to these four issues. Well, in this particular case, add wastewater to the list. So if you're, you want to limit what you're asking your taxpayers to ante up, then you repurpose what you're currently asking them to do.
And I think, by implication, I think you answered my next question, which was approximately how much money would be raised in that repurposing, that 1.5%? And it sounds like it'd be about, based on current numbers, about $1.8 million?
Yeah, actually, less than that, Michael. The 3.7 that we're doing now is not an annual appropriation. The annual appropriation with half of the CPA is about $750,000 a year.
That would be approximately what you realize from that?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
The one disadvantage, and a significant disadvantage, is that we get some match for that, and so we'd sacrifice half of the match as well, and that's money that we don't raise from our taxpayers. But on the other hand, you'd look at the capital forgiveness and the other opportunities of savings, so that would help justify that.
The other question I had is, and I could have a lot, but I'll defer in a minute. The first phase is going to be about 400 hookups, right? More or less?
We're going to run the backbone of the town from...
And it'll probably, what, be more through the commercial?
Yeah, exactly.
Just to start with?
The whole key on the modification of the plan, and we did have some success, significant success with this in Chatham, is to run down '28. It's the most disruptive part of it. It's going to be easier here than it was there because of the wider roads, but the intent of doing that is to emphasize Kathy's point of economic development. People are coming in and looking at our properties because the market has come down, and they like to develop them, but they don't have $1 million to add to their bottom line. And so if they don't have to spend $1 million for a Title V or a septic sewer system, we drive down their bottom line and make it more affordable. And we're hoping that running that the length of '28 will have an economic stimulus boon to that commercial part of our community. Now, it has a dual purpose as well. Well, three purposes, actually. The other is it gets to Dennis. So when they build theirs, it flows, and we don't have to rebuild the connection to them. And as Peter indicated, and it's a lot of data, I know, that we presented tonight, but the advantages of doing this regionally in terms of economy and scale are huge, both for Dennis and for Yarmouth, or for that matter, Barnstable, if we consider that. So you build a backbone, one end of the town to the other. The third advantage is, that's where all your use is. Use comes revenue, revenue pays for costs, and so you want to get as many people online as quickly as you can for all of those reasons. But a significant advantage is to immediately mitigate your cost.
This user fee was something, was it approximately $50 a month?
Right.
Was that a residential fee, a commercial fee, or is there a difference between the two?
Yeah, one of the, excellent point, Michael, because one of the last things that we had, we were rushing around trying to come up with an answer with five years ago before we presented this to town meeting, is the impact of our proposed residential commercial, residential user fees on commercial entities. And we had just assumed it was going to be a flat line, and you can't do it on a flat line. So that represents the average cost to a residential home. We think it's affordable. It's a new utility fee, but we think it's affordable. It includes the markup for capital offset. But the commercial, which uses more volume, will be a higher rate. Not exponentially. You'd set up a scale, just like you do with water, where the base rate is the $50 that we're talking about, or something less than the $50. And then those people who use 10 times as much, the rate is not 10 times that, but it goes up less according to volume, because their costs associated would be unmarketable for us to be able to address. So that rate scale that we had before needs to be totally thrown out, and we need to adjust it now according to volume used.
Thank you. Tracy?
That was one of my questions, too. That's just for user fees, so those are people who are directly connected?
Yes.
So, we had talked in the past, we had some ideas, and we talked, the last time, we talked about water rates, about combining the water sewer.
Right.
And the possibility of rate increases to help pay for that. Is that now, we're not looking at increases in...
Well, you can. As Rich indicated, this is a menu, and we've talked about a lot of other opportunities, and I don't mean to discourage you to look at every opportunity, you just want it to be equitable. The water rates, albeit terrifically affordable here in Yarmouth relative to other communities, are probably going to have to be modified in the not-too-distant future. So that coupled with the fact that one thing that was probably obscure in this presentation, you want to combine all your departments, and you want to combine your billing. Ed's not going to let me send out two bills when I can send out one, or you guys, I'm sorry. So you'd probably bill your sewer at the same time you build your water, and you'd base one rate upon another. And so...
I like how you say that.
I'll have to remember what I said. I'll review the tape and make sure I do it next week. Oh, I'm sorry. But no, we're not considering as an alternative generating increased revenue from water because we think we're going to need that for water capital itself.
Okay. Speaking of capital, first of all, I just want to say we have an awesome team. You guys put this in a perspective that is just palatable, and I feel like I must be missing something because I'm interested in letting it sink in. It's a lot of information, and I don't really have all the questions right now. I'm sure the public will be watching. I do feel, I've been happy since it failed because, as terrible as that is, it was so unaffordable for people the last time, and it's forced us to think differently and think smarter. And there wasn't a single person through that whole process that said that they didn't want wastewater, they didn't want to help the environment, they just really couldn't afford it.
Right.
So this puts it really in a totally different perspective. But what makes me nervous is not looking at it in a holistic view. We don't know about capital for the schools, and it looks to me like our entire debt drop-off for the next many years is going to be taken for one issue, so where does that put us with any other capital needs other than what's in the budget?
Yeah.
I know we've done a good job of getting a significant amount of money into the annual budget, but if we need a new town hall built, you know, our ability to be more flexible with the taxes then, I think...
Yeah. Let me, excellent question. Eric had preceded it with some concerns that you didn't mention, and that's our potential capital obligation with Cape Cod Tech, as well as our own schools, and we have taken that into consideration. The debt drop-off that you saw here anticipates that it will currently be used for everything in our existing capital facility plan. Now, there are two things I want to bring to your attention. The first is that if you then add to that school capital, DY, and Cape Cod Tech, relative to the numbers we're talking about here, it's pretty small. And so what you do is you simply shift that plan down. We can show it for you graphically, we can come back and show you that graphically if you'd like, but those costs, being relatively small, can shift along the bottom of the graph to cover those costs without tax increases. The reason you can do it is because you've already exceeded that cost in that particular area of the graph by other revenue sources. And so that's the last advantage that Rich pointed out to you. The slide that indicates, I'll screw it up if I go back to it, but the slide that indicates the total cost and the line of, the total revenue and the line of cost declining, those are funds, can you point with the laser, the line going down? See, our revenue sources are so going to dramatically exceed our costs at that point in time, Tracy, that they'll easily be able to be available for those other needs. Now, Cape Cod Tech and DY, albeit significant costs pale in comparison to this cost chart. But the last part of your question is, an excellent part of your question, and Rich indicated that some of those excess revenues after we pay for these costs are going to be to do what communities don't ever do but should do, and that is put money aside for reconstruction. These facilities don't last forever. And finally, to your question of a town hall, the capital facility plan that we've put together is our expectation of need over 30 years. But there's going to be people, might not be all us, but there are going to be people here 30 years from now, and they need to have facilities as well, replaced or supplanted. That, you can see, the colored portion of the revenue above the declining cost line is available for that purpose. If you do it cleverly, and believe me, these guys can do it cleverly.
The, having the backbone go down Route 28 makes so much sense. That was one of the biggest things last time, is we weren't even touching the surface of where the issue is, so I'm thrilled with that. And there's so much, I think, property owners on Route 28 that are waiting and haven't done anything because they don't know what is going to happen. So I think that that makes good sense, and hopefully it will stimulate some tax growth. One of the problems last time, too, was the reduction of nitrogen and the amount of years it will take.
Yeah.
Do we know 80% in Lewis Bay, 96% in Parker's River, and 59.5% in Bass River? That needs to be reduced.
Yeah.
Does this plan attain that? Does it attain it in an amount of time that's acceptable, and will it suit the 208 plan?
Yeah, the whole key for the affordability of this plan is we basically said to people who are telling us to do, implement something, we told them, "Pound sand. We can't do it in that period of time. It's unrealistic. You can't do it in 20 years. It's taken us 100 years to get ourselves in this fix. We're going to take 50 years to get out of it." And the whole affordability aspect of this plan, and I recommend every community does the same thing, is to create a problem which gradually moves towards a solution, therefore is affordable by doing so. So, is it an acceptable timeframe? These discussions have been ongoing with other communities, not just Yarmouth, with DEP and with the county, and they've accepted a longer-term implementation. Now, we weren't led to believe we could do that in the past, or we would have done it. And ours takes it a step further. We're saying 55 years before the last phase goes in. However, those numbers become important, Tracy. They're accurate numbers in our estimation in terms of the TMDLs, how much has to be removed from each one of these estuaries. We're not going to trust those numbers. We'll build a facility, we'll build a back, you'll build a facility, you'll build a backbone, and then you'll only do the next phase after you've tested to see how much you've already taken out. And if you've taken out all you need to take out, and the numbers meet what the TMDLs are, you either delay or don't implement the next phase, so these costs can be reduced. That's why we call it an adaptive management plan. So, we want to do something that resolves our solution, but we don't want to overbuild it. it. Now, ultimately, in a hundred years, people will look back on this conversation and laugh, because we'll all be soured, and the entire community will be soured. That's what happened in Boston, what happens in most metropolitan areas, and it undoubtedly happened here. But how quickly you go towards resolving a problem that's been, taken a hundred years to resolve, is coming out of your pocketbook. So I suggest you do it slowly, and measure the necessity of the next step each time.
In the interim, always the arguments are the same with the septic. You know, are you doing everything you can first? Have we addressed the fertilizer issue? Have every cesspool upgraded to Title V? Are we ensuring that all of those things are now occurring first?
Look, I will, I'm going to step back and answer that as completely as I can, Tracy. No, we're not. This concept, we wanted to present to you, you remember the last time we talked about this, I called this the boogeyman under the bed, because we're all scared to be Jesus of this number. And the fact of the matter is, what we wanted to present to you, and to the community, is, this is not undoable, this is imminently doable. But, a lot of this is going to take a while to put in place. Special legislation, authorization of plans, concepts, town meeting votes, it's going to take a period of two or three years, just to get ourselves in gear, and be ready to even put the first shovel in the ground. So there are a lot of things that haven't been done yet, that need to be done. This is a concept to demonstrate that it can be done, but it's going to take us a long period of time in order to actually implement this. Now, I forgot the actual point, because my preamble is so long, but if you remind me of it, I'll get back to it.
Well, I was just talking about the fertilizer and cesspools.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
During that period of time, there's no question that, you know, in this budget you saw, we're putting money in for stormwater. So we're starting the stormwater mitigation, that's according to mandate, and we've started to fund it. Doesn't compete with these funds, we fund it elsewhere. Fertilizer, you know, there's some problems with doing fertilizer because of the enforcement. Are we ready to do it? Sure. Should we do it? Absolutely. Now bear in mind, it's eight percent of the problem, but you should attack a hundred percent of the problem. You're right, Tracy. The eighty-five in this plant, and the other eight, as well as the stormwater. So you need to coincidentally do that, and you need to build support to do it, because that's not going to be politically easy either.
Speaking of politically easy, the regional approach is, again, another great piece of this, because the last time we were looking at a lot of millions of dollars, and yet the town beside us was doing nothing.
Right.
And so, you, you know, working with our abutting towns is very, very important to have the people of this community buy into knowing that we're not the only ones that's causing the problem here, so, but that, you know, that's easier said than done, because generally, I just want to say that I'm happy, and I look forward to sinking it all in and talking about it again.
The regional point is an excellent one. When I indicated it takes a lot of time, that's going to be significant. But the advantages to both communities are so outstanding, that, and you've demonstrated a track record of working with Dennis and Barnstable, so you need to do it again. The whole, the whole part of the discussion that was exasperating, for those of us who watched this over the past several decades, is the inability of addressing the issue regionally, and all the money you're going to lose, and the taxpayer's going to pay for it, because you don't do that. We've already begun the discussion with Dennis. David works for both communities, both Dennis and us. They've indicated some interest in continuing these discussions, and he showed us, and he will show them as well, the advantages. Not just the capital savings, but the millions of dollars annually that are saved, if you do it together. We haven't had a great track record with all of our regional agreements, but we've done okay. And it's not a third-party agreement, like it is with D Y, where you, school committee intervenes. These are strictly two towns, so they're much more successful normally. But it's a lot of work, a lot of work.
And just one more question. How did Chatham handle, one of the fears, when we went through this the last time, was the land use.
Yeah.
You don't have the use for septic, and I think a lot of people feared the growth, the build-out. How did Chatham handle that?
Well, Chatham is the, is our bipolar opposite, in terms of their apprehension about growth. They were paranoid about any type of growth that sewer would enable. And so they dealt with it, and the only way they really can, through zoning. And they reached an agreement, before it was even implemented, that the current level of zoning will not be exceeded, based upon availability opportuned now by sewer. And that's what they did, before they voted a nickel. Now, that is not airtight, as you might expect, most things in zoning aren't. And so they're still talking about it ten years later. But the advantage of that is that what they have put in place to restrain growth, based upon increased availability because of sewer, has restrained to the extent they're satisfied. Now, I suggest, we're in an entirely different mode. We're probably happy as all get out, in order to see some of the growth. But we need to take into consideration appropriate zoning, that's going to be affected by the availability of density, because of sewer treatment.
Right, I think it's balanced, and we are in a different place. I don't think neutral is, what we're looking for, however, you know, we could really see some significant density gross, growth, so looking at our commercial area is very different than looking at the residential, and that's something that the planning board, I'm sure, is going to be struggling with moving forward. But it's something that makes people very apprehensive, because we are doing this to protect the beauty of Cape Cod, and what we all love. And while we do need economic development, we also want to keep the quaint community that we have, and not change it dramatically, so.
Yeah, Title V is really not what holds back our density issues, it's zoning. And so zoning can address the apprehension about increased density. Title V, frankly, being replaced, and being no longer the thing that holds back density, will be the least of your concerns.
Jim?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, I actually was at the town meeting when we could have done this for a million and a half dollars, and it was too much money then, so I supported the process the last time. I do think, though, too, Bill, I've got a couple of concerns. One is, when we're looking over a fifty-five-year period of time, we're looking at estimations, and how do we assure ourselves that our estimations are going to be sufficiently good enough, so that the expected return does appear, so that the cost actually is covered?
Oh, we don't. The last price tag after we put the connection in was four-hundred-and-twenty-seven million dollars. If I had put a cost escalator on that, it'd be a billion dollars. So, your question is excellent, but we didn't do it. And the reason we didn't do it was not because we didn't want to frighten people, but rather that, as costs increase, your revenue streams increase, too. So your revenue stream, because we've charted that, and we know that as the cost of living goes up, you only increase your property tax, but all your other revenue streams will go up to compensate for that escalating cost of capital. It's other, I'm sorry, Jim. It's the other real advantage of hustling this at the beginning, though. Because, I mean, it's the old adage, if you don't do it today, it's going to cost you twice as much tomorrow. The first phase, the most aggressive phase of doing 28, that's going to be a hundred million dollars or so. And so you wanted to do that within a, an inflationary, a specific inflationary period of time. And so you can minimize that accurate dilemma that you're going to face over the fifty-five years.
Did Chatham realize revenue growth because of their sewer?
Hard to tell what counts for their revenue growth. Their revenue growth has been significant annually. Did their sewer, well, bear in mind, they're just finishing the construction of their second phase.
Right.
And so, I guess the answer to your question is, the values of the individual property have increased, because they're not on Title V's, and they're on sewer.
Right.
But have they had an influx of new development? No, absolutely not.
Yeah.
No.
The other concern I have, too, is with the research being done on demographics, locally, nationally, internationally, the population growth doesn't look like it's going to be able to support those people that are already alive here. So how do we, how do we take into account, when we're doing something like this kind of a project, because I agree, fifty-five years or so, you're going to need, because we waited so long. But how do we take into account that kind of measurement, if at all, to ensure that we can complete what we start?
Yeah. Well, you write a plan, and you review the plan every year, and you have consistent people implementing that plan for you, and you hope the elections help you in that regard as well. But the key here is making a plan that's demonstrated to be a good plan, that's affordable, and just incorporating it into your planning every single year.
And the last, the last thing, too, is that, I'm going to do something for Norman, he's not here, but Norman's concerned about, you know, the burden on the senior citizens going forward with taxes and stuff like that. We've already made changes in the structure of our finances, to transfer costs through fees and other things. And these things are going to be added to that. What are we, what are we going to do to address the concerns of the senior citizens on a fixed income? For instance, the social security people, who didn't even get a pay raise at all this year, to cover these other costs that they're going to be dealing with?
Well, bear in mind, that you have that dilemma every single year, approve a budget.
Right.
And you say to the people, you can increase that cost to whomever, fixed-income people or rich people, whoever, by two and a half percent. And they get used to it, and they deal with it, and we all have, in life. Well, my advanced age lets me look at this in terms of a senior citizen, and I think this is the type of thing that I anticipate I'm going to have to address in twenty years. The costs are going to go up, when my income doesn't. But in your particular plan, this particular plan, if you choose to embrace it, it doesn't increase the property tax. And so, the opportunity to set a fifty-dollar monthly user fee, you can see that you're going to be able to rescind that, or reduce that. If you operate it efficiently, you're not going to have an undue burden in that particular regard. But the whole key is saving on the property tax.
The other thing, just my last, if I could, have we built in the cost of maintaining and upgrading our septic treatment plant now, and do we anticipate new neighbors from the tri-county closing coming to us?
Yeah, Rich didn't get into a great level of detail, but that little earthworm revenue, five-hundred thousand, is just that. David and the finance team have been working diligently to get our facility back up to what it was originally permitted for, and that's twenty-nine million gallons a year. We're at twenty, we're at twenty-one, I guess, now. And so we've had discussions with one of those three communities. Brewster said we can take them today, and if we get that authorization in the not-too-distant future, to go from twenty-one to twenty-nine, we can take Trittown. And so, taking Trittown is why we just spent two-point-five million dollars renovating our facility. Because we wanted to get that capacity, because we knew Trittown was going to close, and so we want to get that capacity and get that revenue. The revenue will actually generate reserves for us, and that's what those reserves are. They're really seed money for the whole wastewater program, that's why we started that process a couple of years ago. Now, it has a limited period of time, though, Jim, because we're not stupid, we know that after ten years, these improvements are going to have to be duplicated by new improvements. So that five-hundred thousand available for the first ten is going to have to be recapitalized to keep it going. By that point in time, we may not choose to do it, because of our sewer wastewater treatment facility, maybe more economic for us to incorporate the two, as opposed to having two.
Well, I was just going, that was the last thing. At what point in our plan right now are we looking at the possibility of eliminating that, if we go into a proposed plan to sewer the town?
Yeah, probably not within ten years, at least, Jim. And that, once again, is what you learn from experience. In Chatham, they have capacity to deal with septic, but they don't want to deal with septic, because you can't get sufficient volume of your regular waste stream to dilute the septic. And so if you bring in the septic, it's too dense, you can't treat, doesn't get down to three parts per million. So they have to get virtually fifty percent of their town connected, going through their existing system, before they become competitors to us for septic, because we take it from neighboring communities, including Chatham. So the same would happen with us. We need to get our volume sufficiently high to dilute septic, which is more dense. And so, that would take us, even with accelerated construction, at least Phase Two, and that's at least ten years away.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Bill, explain to me what the definition of twenty-five percent forgiveness, is that reimbursement?
Yes, that's exactly what it is. So if my, if I do a hundred million dollars in construction, they give me a check for twenty-five million dollars.
Like snow and ice?
Yeah. No, like the check I held up in front of Chatham, saying, "This is real money."
Oh, really? You actually get it?
Yeah, you actually get it. Well, I mean, ten percent, the team gets ten percent.
You know, this might be duplicating Jim's question a little bit. This is a twenty, a fifty-five-year construction period.
Right.
What was the construction duration of the old plan?
Thirty or forty, well, the construction duration was thirty years, but the funding duration was fifty.
And this funding duration is a hundred?
Or would be eighty-five, I believe.
Eighty-five.
The last year you construct, you bond at over thirty, so it'd be eighty-five, Eric.
What's the, and this may be a question for David, what's the likelihood, or the lifespan of technology? What's the likelihood that in twenty-five years, before we even complete this, that the technology will be completely different, and the, and the half a plan that we've got constructed is now antiquated and obsolete?
Terrific question. If you were asking about the cell phone industry, you'd have a different, entirely different answer than the wastewater industry. I mean, all technology is driven by marketability, and this is the best market in the world, to build wastewater treatments. So, the engineering improvements, you can test it yourself. Are we dealing with the same concepts? I mean, the concepts we built, when did we build the septic facility over here? I was still in Dennis, so it was in the eighties.
Oh, yeah.
Technology hasn't, it's advanced, but it hasn't fundamentally changed. That facility still works. What you're building today will be effective for you thirty years from now. Now, a corollary to that question is, I think, is, when's the magic bullet going to get developed? And none of us really can determine when that's going to be. But the same type of ditch aeration treatment that we do now, we did thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years ago. Will we do it in another thirty years? I would guess we would.
I guess my final comment would be on the real estate transfer tax, and, you know, my questions about that, and the nuances about it, some of which I've already verbalized to you, there's just, I don't even want to begin to get into them tonight, but it sounds like, you know, we're under a mandate to have a plan by June of this year.
Right.
And if, if nothing more, I mean, this is certainly a base plan that could be used to satisfy the requirements that have been put upon us, and we can continue to develop it until when?
Well, it has to be submitted by June. What the plan would need to be is relatively straightforward. They have a plan. It's a major engineered plan, so it's huge, way beyond what you need for 208 mandate. And you'd say that you're adding Bass River, because you now have the data, data on Bass River, and you're modifying the phasing of the implementation, you're going down 28 first. You don't have to mention the specifics of your funding, you just have to indicate it's going to be funded through a variety of funding sources, and you just list them.
That brings up, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And so, your modification of the plan, are, you're going to phase it differently, going down 28, and you're going to regionalize with a neighboring community, and you're going to develop funding sources, and here's a list of funding sources.
Are we able to use the same design?
That we had in the past?
Is the design part of the mandated plan?
No, no, it's not. I mean, ultimately, when we get, and you're a couple of years away, but when we get to looking for authorization to build or design the plant, I mean, it's been done, it's not going to change.
So that we won't spend, we won't be reauthorizing new money to, for a new plan? The plan we have today is not wasted money, it will be able to be implemented in whenever this happens.
Yeah, but let me make sure I'm clear, Eric. The facility itself is what I'm talking about. That facility design is fine. It's going to be fine five years from now, three years from now, whenever it's going to be. But the engineering for your collection system is going to change. Heavy-duty emphasis on gravity as opposed to vacuum, and that's going to change, that needs to be redesigned. The phasing is different. Not major, but it does need to be redesigned. So, you're not worried about that between now and June. In June, you say, "We're doing a backbone, going to Dennis, here are funding alternatives, that's it." Timetable to be determined. At some point in time, when you're comfortable with that, and you go through all the discussions about your revenue sources, then you actually engage that concept to be engineered into a full-blown plan. That's several hundred thousand dollars. To get to June, you need to authorize the expenditure of the balance of the twenty that you already appropriated for this purpose.
Can I ask one more question, Eric? Bill, since we're now extending this from the end that we had before, in front of- Bill, since we're now extending this from the end that we had before in front of Sports World to Bass River, are we anticipating as part of this process, land takings and those kinds of things are gonna be required?
No. I mean, honestly, Jim, we haven't really got into that level of detail, so, you know, that's a task, as you know. But no, we're not. We anticipate that the original plan had earmarked eventually getting down 28, and the takings requisite for pumping stations, for example, are on existing owned parcels.
Okay.
Yeah. But that's...
But you're gonna be pumping a long way when you add this extra length from, you already got another mile and a half or so.
All of that.
At least to that, in the spine.
Yep. And there's an expression that "I will clean up," and otherwise, I would be, you know, bleeped. But that's the advantage of gravity. Because this stuff flows downhill.
Downhill.
Yeah. That would be the first time I got bleeped.
Moving forward, how do we...
It's like Gronk in the Super Bowl. The last game, throw some haymakers.
This is as razzle-dazzle as I get, Eric.
Where do we go from here, though? I mean, I know on annual town meeting, we have the 30,000 earmarked for some further engineering.
20.
Is it 20?
I thought, did you just say 20?
Why don't I be clear? I'm sorry. You have to have someone write up a plan. It should be David. And you have money that's set aside. I think we have 30 left of our original 50, so I think 20'll do to get that plan done by June. You can authorize that. And if you like this concept, David can meet your deadline by June. Now, that's a concept. In order to engineer that into a plan, you're gonna see a warrant article in May for a couple hundred thousand dollars. And that's gonna take that concept and engineer it. You've already spent several million on the two estuaries, but now you're gonna incorporate Bass River, so...
So, in May, I guess I'm just trying to figure out how, I mean, it's hard for us. I know we're elected to say this is what we wanna do, but I really feel like we need, at some point in time, some input from the community before we say, "Yes, this is the plan we wanna go forward with," because...
Well, that'll be the town meeting article, I would assume.
So, you think May, that's the plan?
We wanted to get this done in January, so you'd have that opportunity. The deadline is in June, and this is the first time people have heard about this. And so, you're gonna get feedback, I assume, in this particular regard. You'll put it on another agenda, I assume, with more formal questions. Norman will be here as well. But at some point in time, you need to bite the bullet and say, "The concept is acceptable." Put it into a plan. Have David, give David an additional couple bucks, and he'll put it into a plan. Then, that's a preamble to a warrant article, which will come formally before you to engineer that plan. All of which will enable discussions before you, with the finance committee, with other committees that wanna weigh in, and ultimately, as Jim indicated, town meeting.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that we have a public process.
Didn't we already vote to have David do the plan?
Well, we did it in two parts, Jim. We authorized up to 20K, and that's what we've used it for the last couple of months, working us through it. And he's exceeded that, but he's, I told him we're good for it. And it's gonna take him some more money to get us up to the submittal of the June deadline.
But if my recollection is correct, we had a discussion, but we had 50,000 left from before, so that we could spend up to 50?
That's correct, yep. And you've authorized 20, you authorized another 20, we should be home.
30, okay.
30, I'm sorry.
That's what I saw.
I guess the price went up.
Well, it's something we have to do. It's part of our 208 requirement, correct?
Sure, absolutely. That was a point on the slide, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the remaining, up to the remaining balance of the 50,000 to be available to draft the plan.
Is there a second?
I thought we, didn't you just say we've already done that?
We did it in steps, as Bill says.
We have not drafted the plan. David's been working on it, but we need to complete it.
You authorized 20, and now we have 30 left that still needs to be authorized.
And, but we also have an additional amount that is coming on the warrant, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's after, we got the plan first, then the drawings and the engineering is what's gonna be on the warrant.
I just wanna know what the total cost of creating this plan is, just so we all know.
Well, that, you've spent a lot of money so far, but the additional cost of completing the plan would be the balance of this 30.
I mean, to satisfy the 208, our 208.
Oh.
That we have to submit.
A total of between 40 and 50,000 dollars.
That's gonna cover the engineering for the remaining balance?
No.
No, that's gonna cover the concept, it's the middle of the June deadline.
Yeah. So, what I'm proposing is that we spend the money that's remaining of the 50 to do the plan itself, and then see what the town meeting does with respect to the engineering, because that's gonna have to be an article for them.
I would assume that you'd probably make a similar presentation to this in abbreviated form for that $200,000 authorization, because that's the first time you're gonna have to go back to town meeting for tacit approval. And, you know, that's the best way to communicate on town meeting forum.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda.
208 update. So, just, we had a motion. Is there a second? Was there a second?
I don't know.
I just don't know if we're...
Yes.
We will not comply, let me ask it this way. We will not comply with the 208 requirements if we don't go forward with this process.
This or some other process, right?
Yeah, so we...
I'll second it for purposes of discussion. I wanna make sure I'm clear. We had 50,000 left over. We authorized 20. Tonight, we're authorizing the remaining 30.
Correct.
At town meeting, you've made reference to the number of 40 and to the number of 200,000. Which will be before town meeting this May?
200,000.
What was the 40 number?
The 40 will pay for the plan, the concept plan to be submitted by June.
We don't have 40. We're only authorized...
20 was spent, and, I'm sorry, 50. And 30 we're authorizing. So, no more than $50,000 will pay for the plan that we're required to submit by June.
Okay.
Thereafter, that concept gets paid out of the 200,000, have it engineered and drawn up.
That 50 includes the 20 that's already been spent.
Yeah, you're right. I was unclear on that, but you're right, Mike.
Okay.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Passes unanimously. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for the presentation.
I can't believe you got away with actually speaking so little at your last meeting, but...
It's all part of the design, Eric.
How much, 200 grand, right? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Let's see, the preliminary warrant. Looks like 37 articles. Got our ordinary CPA and zoning, few petitions. What article is this additional 200,000 design money under bow? Septic Enterprise?
We'll squirrel it into capital.
Capital.
I'm not sure. You have several capital articles, so you'll probably put it under capital. We may actually reauthorize existing septic money, which is in surplus for that purpose, but in the presentation last week, I anticipated it'd be paid for out of free cash.
And the other question I had is, why is CPA memberships separated from the other CPA articles?
Oh, just because that was a separate issue, which I had up on the board from last town meeting. We're gonna be talking about whether or not you technically eliminate the open space committee person from CPA, because you're considering eliminating the open space committee, per se. And so, it really wasn't an authorization or appropriation. You can put it with the CPA articles wherever you want.
At this point, it was just a question.
Yeah, it was a language issue.
Jim? Any questions on the preliminary warrant?
No.
Tracy?
Nothing. This is a, just a general idea. There's nothing, I mean, we have time to change it, move it.
Oh, yeah. This is just because your deadline for petition submissions has passed. And so, I just assembled the articles now. The next several months, you're gonna take a look at each one of these, have a presentation made to you, and you're gonna vote yea or nay to support.
Did you just say that the deadlines pass for petition articles? Because on the thing you sent in last week's packet, it said you had till January 27th, I think, to submit them.
Oh, then I misspoke. We're nearing it. Maybe I put it on because it was the last opportunity for me to do so.
Michael, anything?
No.
We need to talk about what day of the week. I thought it was the town moderator's decision, but Bill has informed me it's our decision. Last year, we had our...
Saturday meeting?
It wasn't a maiden trip on a Saturday meeting, but it was our maiden trip on a Saturday meeting. What are the thoughts? I mean, this is a two-night warrant, most likely, if we...
I think our follow-up to our last thing, it was attended well. However, there was some, I mean, you never know what's gonna happen. But I definitely think we need more than one year to be able to see any type of trend in it.
Right.
The only feedback that we had that was that it was difficult for some business owners being during the day on Saturday, but we have the same argument when it's in the evening with people with children or that work. It's very difficult to find a time that satisfies everybody. But I certainly think that we should give Saturday at least one more time to see. What were our numbers? Does anybody know?
I wasn't prepared to tell you that, but it's such a small pool of information, because you just done it once, and you had the motorcycle folk there. And so, that kinda go, you know, obviously, that's article gonna be submitted every year, as you saw here. But it's hard to tell if people came out more because it was Saturday or because of the interest in motorcycle or shooting.
He's leaving. He doesn't care about the hate mail we're gonna get.
First thing I'm gonna do when I retire is buy a motorcycle, Eric. Scream through Yarmouth.
Judging from the numbers of motorcycles we had there, I would say that was a different clientele for, I mean, unusual because of that article.
But Harris has put it on again, so there, it's gonna be...
Well, there was that and the gun range. I mean, the numbers were definitely skewed by two hot button.
I don't care what brings people. I'm just happy that people come. I don't care what they're, I mean, I just hope, I hope we have more pressing issues that bring people out.
But you can't tell that they were there for Saturday because of being there for Saturday. They were there for those two articles, whether it was Saturday or Monday, I think, is the thing we have to figure out.
Right. We don't have to make the decision tonight. I will go on the record as saying I am in favor of hammering it out in one day on a Saturday. But again, we have time to make that decision.
Yes, you do.
Board and committee actions, Mr. Quirk?
Yes, I have some appointments. Mr. Chairman, let me get to my right page here. Just editing. Oh, thank you. I would request that we consider the appointment of Sean Igo for a regular position for a five-year term on the Board of Appeals running through 2021. This would be a reappointment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Come on, you gotta, you tied up from the last presentation, I can tell. I have the three alternate positions, one-year terms running through January 2017 for the Board of Appeals. Those would be reappointments also, Richard Neets, Gerald Gonick, and Doug...
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Quirk. Approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of December 8th and the minutes of December 15th?
So moved.
I have a correction on the 8th. On the second page, where Mr., it says Mr. Tom Sullivan, in approximately at least five places, there may be more than that. That should be Tom Murphy.
Mm-hmm.
I think Mr. Sullivan would be happy that we're thinking about him, but he wasn't here and he's not the right individual. So...
All right, we'll do that.
We should correct that.
Has there been a second? Was there a second?
Second, with the change.
And I have one change.
It's in the third paragraph as well.
On the minutes of December 15th, on item number three, new town administrative discussion, the third sentence informed them of the withdrawal of one of the candidates.
Where's that, Eric?
December 15th, town administrative discussion, second page, third sentence.
Second one?
Yes, the 15th.
Yeah, okay, right.
Oh, okay. One, the two should be one?
The two should be one.
Are we sure that they're not talking about the two that didn't?
No.
I also have a correction on that same, those same minutes, on the third page, where it says, "Another search on a national level will cost somewhere between $7,000 and $10,000 range." I reported on that, as I recall, and I realize this figure might not be a hard number, but I reported 5,000 to 7,500. They subsequently sent an email, which was a little higher, and maybe that's where that figure came from. But actually, the discussion, the number was 5,000, 7,500.
All right, so we have a motion and a second with three amendments.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Passes unanimously. Individual items. Tracy?
Oh.
All right, Jim?
I would just like to...
Hey, wait a minute. It's all right, go ahead, Jim.
We'd just like to wish Bill well in his upcoming retirement, and he's done a great job for us here, and we'll miss him.
Thanks, Jim.
Michael?
I'd like to, I'd like to thank Bill for his service to the town, and I enjoyed very much working with you. And I appreciate your professionalism, your leadership. I know from the last meeting, from dialogue you had with Eric, that you like Bible quotes and Latin phrases. So, I tried to find a Bible quote that would be appropriate for tonight, but I couldn't find anything. I went all the way back to the Book of Genesis, to Noah's Ark, and I still couldn't find anything. But I did note that they didn't take any town administrators on the ark. And I know what you're thinking. They didn't take any lawyers either, because they left previously in a pirate ship. But I did, I did compose a Latin departure for you, and it is this. "To veilam et sani felicitas," which means, "I wish you good health and much happiness."
Thank you very much, Michael. Are you ready yet?
Yeah, well, kind of, but in any event, I'm never gonna be ready to say goodbye to Bill. I've had so much fun working with you. You've got a great sense of humor. You're brilliant. I mean, just look at the team that we've put together since you've been here. What can you say? You've done a great job, and sad to see you go. But I do wish you the best of health and happiness, and hopefully, you'll buy some property in Yarmouth and increase our tax rate.
I don't know about that real estate transfer tax. You're okay buying, just don't sell.
You're okay buying, just don't sell.
You have to stay here forever.
Thank you, Tracy.
One way or the tether.
Tether.
So the only other thing is, we got an email from National Grid. We're having open house about the project, the construction project. So Thursday, January 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00, at Nathaniel Wixson School in Dennis. If anybody wants to talk about the project, the moratorium permitting, construction, consumer, and community engagement, engineer, design, safety, environmental protection, they'll be there at that time. And I know Mike's the one who usually gives the...
Upcoming events?
The bad news? No, no. I just want to express our, or my sadness and thoughts and prayers for John Biaga and his family. Mr. Biaga was a volunteer for the town of Yarmouth, and his stepson was killed on Route 28 in Yarmouth as a pedestrian this past week, and so I'm thinking of him.
Oh, let's see. I will, I will, you're not going to get out of here without two more Thursday meetings, so I will, I'll see you at noon Thursday. And then I'll have all kinds of free time on my hands. But it has been a pleasure to serve as chairman for the people of this town with you for your entire five years here, so it'll be, it'll be a change to see you gone, so. But I'll get all sappy with you later on in the week.
All right, all right.
I will say that if I'm going to take one thing, if I take one thing away from the last five years, it's going to be the term bipolar opposite. I love that.
Thank you, Eric. I could have said it in Latin, you wouldn't have known.
I could have had my sister-in-law slap you when I called it. Probably wouldn't be the first time I was slapped by your sister-in-law. Any updates, Mr. Henchy?
I do, as you know, I've been serving on the Wastewater Collaborative. I'll have my last meeting tomorrow, and I suggest that you appoint Jeff Colby in my stead.
Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Does that need to be made?
Second.
And finally, before you adjourn, since this will be my last opportunity with some of you and also with the folks at home, I said this when you appointed me five years ago, and I meant it then, and I mean it now. It's been an absolute pleasure and privilege to serve you and this community, and I thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, we didn't vote the motion to appoint Jeff.
Oh, well, there was a second.
Yeah, we made it. We just haven't voted it.
I just thought we were so efficient now.
Can we put it on the agenda?
No, we don't need to. It's Mr. Henchy's update, and it's on the agenda, so. Is there, is all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.